Finance Administration Committee meeting to order. A roll call, please.
Alderman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Catalano? Alderman Curialy?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Quorum, make the approval of minutes for September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one, for the Finance Administration Committee. That's my motion.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Report of recommendation: refuse and recycling and disposal services contract. Okay, Mrs. Buggy, you're gonna handle this?
Yes, thank you. So, as this committee knows, we entered into a refuse collection contract in two thousand and seventeen with Flood Brothers. That contract, after a five-year term, is up in April of two thousand and twenty-two. At our previous meeting, the committee decided it would like to hear the renewal proposal from Flood Brothers before it decided whether to go out to bid or go out for RFP. So, before you in your packets is the proposal from Flood Brothers. This evening, we are joined by our liaison, Michael Flood, as well as Bob, Bill, and Kevin Flood. So, I know they are happy to answer any questions, if there are any, as am I.
Okay, do we have any questions? Alderman Ames?
Thank you. Have we had any, like, significant complaints of service over the years, or how has that been from the resident's perspective?
Go ahead.
Yes, so we have been tracking complaints since late two thousand and seventeen. Over the past five years, there have been approximately one hundred complaints. The vast majority of those have been either the garbage lids being left open on rainy days, or of, like, a missed collection. However, we've been able to resolve most of those very quickly and efficiently. Sometimes the resident just misses pickup. Sometimes there is an accident, but we call Flood Brothers and they are able to come out and pick it up for us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Woods?
I'll make a motion to approve the extension of the contract for five years.
Second? Okay, with that being said, take, uh, Alderman Messina, questions?
Yeah, I know I had asked this a while back, never did get an answer. The Special Events Committee, we had a commitment from them to actually deliver some cans like they used to, and with COVID, those are supposed to be reallocated for other events, and I, did they fulfill that commitment?
Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I was actually just finalizing some of the details with Mr. Flood before the meeting. What we did was, we sent them, reached out to them, and they did concur that those monies could be reallocated to other events. We're just waiting until after trunk or treat to get all of the invoices, then they just send them one reimbursement, request for reimbursement, instead of doing them piecemeal throughout the year. But yeah, they had no issue with that, and that will be forthcoming. Like I said, after trunk or treat, we'll get that invoice, and then we'll get that sent over to them.
Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yeah, what, I know we talked about this in the initial contract, whatever happened to the RFID chips that were supposed to be placed in the cans for tracking purposes?
Mrs. Buggy?
I spoke about this with Michael. I believe they are in the cans. They are actually used to track the movement of the trucks. So, there's some sort of GPS tracking, so that Flood Brothers can tell whether they've missed a street, or they've dropped off their load, or whatever. So, my understanding is that's how they work. I think there might be a misunderstanding, and that there is a thought process that they do something else.
Anything else, Alderman Sizmarsky? Alderman Ames?
So, I'm seeing in the proposal that there's some new added services, that if we were to renew, that would be put into this contract that we did not previously have. Can you just review that for everybody?
Go ahead.
Yes, so there are four new added value services. The first one is an annual shred and electronics event, which Flood Brothers is happy to provide for. I would note that at our last green fair, it did cost the city four thousand dollars, and it cost Wintrust an additional one thousand dollars. So, that is money saved by the city. They are also offering an annual pumpkin smash, which we do not currently do, so that would be of added benefit to the residents. And then they are offering a maximum of twenty rolloff dumpsters per year for free. In typical years, we use about sixteen rolloff dumpsters for public works, and that has cost us eight, the most recent number is eight thousand dollars. And then the fourth one that they are offering is street sweeping for the post Memorial Day Parade, and one sweep per year of the metro lot.
Alderman Ames?
Just a follow. So, for the additional street sweeping, is there, like, what type of value is that? Because it looks like so far, that's adding an extra about twelve thousand dollars of services on, that we would not be paying for, correct?
Go ahead.
Yes, that's correct. And currently, they don't perform street sweepings. The city does them occasionally, so this would be an added benefit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Messina?
Yeah, it seems pretty quiet up here, so maybe because we jumped right in. But it's my initial thoughts, right? You guys have done a great job, great showing. Thank you for being here. That says a lot. A little disappointed, right, in the RFP, not even RFP, excuse me, in your initial response. I expected a little more, right? I understand that this gives a baseline now for everybody else, so I was hoping for more, because at the end of the day, these are great services you're offering us, the city, those value add. At the same time, I'm gonna speak for myself, and I think I'll speak for my counterpart. For me, it's all about my residents, right? So, I have to go out and explain and justify the variable, right, that costs year over year. So, I just, it would've been nice to see that structured differently. Again, speaking for myself, it would've been nice to see some of those services. Would pay for them now? I would've rather seen the rates lower, so that we could've pushed those on to the residents, because essentially, it puts me back in a position that I have to go back and at least propose it, I can't speak for everybody up here, to say, how do we offset some of those cost increases? Because that's what I'm gonna hear. Those are the calls I'm gonna get, not the, oh, thank you for the extra shredding, thank you for the pumpkin smash, which are all great value adds for the city as a whole. It just makes my job harder. So, it's just a little disappointed how it's structured. You guys have been phenomenal. You guys have resolved the issues, the few issues I brought. I just, I was hoping to make it, I was hoping it was gonna be a very simple, easy way to look at and say, done, I don't even wanna take it out to RFI. This puts me in a situation where I gotta explain myself. So, that's really it. Thank you, guys. You have done great.
Mayor?
I'm a little confused to that statement.
Thank you.
So, are you saying we have to raise the rates because we don't have to raise the rates with this contract?
No, you do, in year three.
No, we do not.
Okay, that's, that's how I read it, so.
No, no, we get an increase, the residents will not.
Okay.
There's a difference.
That's not how I interpreted it, but okay.
If you look and, look and see what we pay, we can hold the line, and no worries. That's the key right there.
I, I didn't see that, or read that in there?
No, well, it's not in there. It's, you know, I, you know, I did a little research and asked Mr. Wilson exactly, make sure I'm right, and we will not have to raise.
Okay. I guess I just have a comment to that. I mean, I mean, we may not have to raise it to the residents, but that twelve thousand dollars, my guess would be wiped out. I mean, that twelve thousand dollar value add, if our rates are gonna go up, and where the city's gonna absorb it, I mean, that twelve thousand dollars, I mean, that's basically, there is no value add. So, again, for the residents, I mean, I would've, you know, I was hoping that it came in a little bit lower than it was, just to be able to tell our residents, hey, you know, we saved you some money. They came in, you know, really strong with a good fee, and, you know, we're keeping the same company, and, you know. But again, when we get the phone calls, you know, they're gonna ask, you know, why did we not qualify the RFP? Why did you just renew the contract automatically?
Mrs. Buggy?
Thank you. I was asked by a member to look into the rates that were provided from some of the other communities on the last page. I was able to track down about eight of those agreements, and they have varying start years. So, some start in two thousand and seventeen, some eighteen, some two thousand and twenty. I will say, are, are the rates proposed by Flood, Flood Brothers alternate by an increase of two and a half and two and a quarter percent, and most of the other communities have an increase of three percent or two point six to two point nine percent.
One other question. When you did that homework, did you also find any towns that recently had gone out to RFP, and what kind of bids they got?
There was a, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There was a couple recent ones from two thousand and twenty. They didn't really line up with us, though, in terms of, like, similarities. So, Elmhurst had some changes, but they're based on the size of your tote. And then, there was, let's see, Bloomingdale, and they are showing an increase of, let's see, yeah, about three percent.
But I'm saying, like, compared to the rate we're getting, what were the rates?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Like, the bids that came in, were they lower or higher than the rates that they, they're giving us right now?
Ah, yes, I apologize. Yes, they start at eighteen oh nine for a non-senior, single-family home, and over the five years, they increased to twenty dollars and thirty-three cents.
Okay, Alderman Woods?
Yeah. I only researched five, but I have a full-time job besides this, so thank you for looking into those. And I think to add some clarity to this, it's hard to compare community to community, so you have to really add up the totality of all the services that you're getting, so that's one thing. Then you have to look at what the yearly increases are, and that's what I did. So, to answer that question, what if we went out to bid? Would I find myself better? So, on average, the raises, I came up with the same number that Kate came up with, are consistently three percent, lowest being two point seven, and that was a contract of this year, actually, the end of last year, it was. So, and up to three point seven five percent, the average, again, being somewhere around three percent. And those rates that they show, the majority of the communities don't have the landscape waste. So, when you factor in the landscape waste on some of those, I took a couple of the contracts, and that adds anywhere from, to their eighteen or nineteen dollars, adds twelve to sixteen dollars for that. And that's for the minimal yard waste, only picking up a thirty-five gallon container. We have unlimited. And our contract, when you read through the contracts, I want the, probably the largest notable thing is that, in our community, we, they pick up anything. There's no limit or exclusion, really, unless you tore down your house and put it at the curb, they're not gonna pick it up, but they can say anything. But any household garbage, and I've tested that along with my neighbors many times, the grass, I have a hundred-foot lot, and the grass goes all across the bags, and they come and pick them up. So, that's, that's another thing. And then when you, the brush pickup, none of the contracts have brush pickup, that I read. Again, I didn't read all. I think there's eighteen in there. I didn't read eighteen. You read eight, I read five, some of them probably overlap, but collectively, we probably did ten. And there isn't one of them that offers that service. So, if you start to do the math, and take out that number from that, you would drive our costs down way below, anywhere, anybody could be competitive. I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's a stretch to say that this is probably the best number that we're gonna get, and if we did go out in the competitive market, we would find that we're at three percent, and all the other companies, the big guys, are not gonna wanna meet all the little things that we have. The last thing, the twelve thousand dollar number really is a larger number than twelve thousand, because we didn't add any value to a couple of the other things. And Mike, Alderman Curialy, ran the math and said it to two and a half percent. I think that was a twenty thousand dollar increase, right? And if you factor in all those things, I think that twelve thousand is probably closer to sixteen to seventeen thousand. The increase is so minimal. That teamed up with the fact that we know nothing's going down. Gas has gone up, dump fees have gone up, tires go up, repairs on trucks go up, everything is going, taxes, license plates, insurance. The fact that we're, we have a, no gain the first year and a month, two and a half percent, I think, think is a reduction in price, when you factor everything. Thank you.
Real quick, Mr. Wilson, I think I cut you off before you wanted to say something.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, Alderman Woods covered it with the stickerization of the yard waste. That's just what I was gonna comment on, so he covered it very well.
Okay, perfect. Mayor?
Yeah. Honestly, they've done a good job. So, a hundred complaints in five years, and garbage cans open when it's raining. I mean, that's twenty per year. I understand people don't want any water in their containers, but if, that's the worst we're gonna hear. I think we're good. The landscaping stuff, we chose many years ago to include in our bill, so, and let's face it, I could tell you, I have a landscaper, so it's services of no use to me, unless I'm pulling a few leaves at the end after my landscaper is done. But I think this is more than fair, and we should extend.
Alderman Messina?
I'll play devil's advocate. Exactly, I guess, because I've had this done to me in the corporate world, exactly what do we lose by not going out to RFP? So, they've set a baseline. One could argue, they've done well. What do you, each of us, have to say? What justifies us giving them a free pass versus going out for RFP? I would imagine they're gonna respond, right? So, if they're as great as they are, nothing changes. They're going to respond. But why wouldn't we open it up? And again, huge fans of them, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, and say, why, why wouldn't we open it up? I mean, we're spending all this effort talking about why we're not opening up. Nothing changes, the fact that they are phenomenal. I get that. But people tell me all the time, you guys are phenomenal. Software is great, but I have to open it up for RFP. And if you're as good as you are, you're gonna win the RFP, because you're gonna respond. And I say, you got a very good point. We're, we're gonna respond, because we wanna continue your business. I'm just, I guess I'm a little confused at why we're, to me, it was the magic number, which, I know there were conversations of, can you make it lucrative enough for us not to go out to RFP? And that's the question, I guess, up here. Nothing, I don't think anybody's debating they've done a bad job, and that they've done refuse, you're repeating things that are all, have always been table stakes. I guess, that's the part I, I was hoping for something lucrative enough to make it a slam dunk, like, this is why we didn't go out to RFP, and I, I just didn't see it. Great, they're phenomenal, nothing changes. I just don't know why we're not bringing others to the table to see if that is, if anything has changed, for whatever it's worth, anyway.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
What are you worried about, Mayor? I go, five years ago, I asked the question to yourself and the city manager, why are we going out to RFP? I was told this is a city service. We don't have to go out to RFP, but we did. You said we always go out to RFP, we're going to out to RFP. Now, now you wanna change the way we do things in City Hall?
No. Alderman Woods, you are next.
Again, to see the better deal, I'm, I'm not sure what, what we'd be looking for when our research shows that nobody's gonna, nobody offers the same service to any other community that we get. Every other offer is higher. That's documented. And, and so, if the idea is to drive the price down, I'm, I'm certain we could take a bunch of these stuff out that nobody else offers, and we would drive that initial price down, if, if that's our goal. And it's kinda a question to Alderman Messina, so if you can, so let him respond, just so we can get clarity.
Okay, Mayor, I know you had your hand up, but let me, Alderman Messina, respond.
Again, it's, I have to ask myself, right? I'm a relationship trust guy, right? That's what I am, and I'm a, help me understand why I'm not gonna go out to RFP. How do I justify to my residents that you get a free pass? Here you go. This is, and to me, again, I was, I was a little disappointed. I, I don't, I don't see the math that says that. And if, and if they're gonna do all this, right, like you just said, if they're gonna do it, I, I hope to God they respond, and they deliver at least that. I mean, to me, like I said, I was looking for a compelling reason to act, as I'm told, and I teach my people. I don't, I don't have a compelling reason to act that I'm just gonna give a pass. That's just me.
Mayor?
So, we went out to RFP five years ago. And the reason we went out five years ago is because that contract that we received was garbage, no pun intended. It was overpriced, and as you can see, that contract that we received saved the city, I believe, quarter million dollars, right? And things go up. Now, moving forward, with this contract, at the end of this contract, you're still lower than that contract that they passed would be ten years later. And, let's face it, you're looking at numbers that other communities are paying.
Five.
And you guys were the first ones to say that. They're different towns. Different towns have different, right? And again, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just trying to have everybody off the, I'm a huge fan. I'm not saying that. I just.
Right.
Sorry, I'm not saying that term.
Yeah, good, go ahead.
I just, to me, I don't, I mean, everything you're saying is you're absolutely right. We did save that. We did save that five years. We did. All that's true, but none of that changes if we go out for RFP. If they're gonna respond, they're gonna respond. I would hope they're gonna respond, right? So, the worst-case scenario, as I tell residents, you know what? We did go out to RFP, and they proved, they proved it. They came back even stronger, or they came back with what they had and what they proposed initially, and they killed every, they crushed everybody. But at least I can say there was fair, equitable opportunity to do that. And again, I needed a compelling reason to say, there is no reason why, resident, because look at all this extra stuff. And I, I just, again, I don't, I don't see it here. Every, it doesn't negate any of the awesome stuff they brought to us five years ago, because that was a crappy contract that happened before me, so I can't speak to that. I didn't approve that contract. It was a crappy contract, and, and I get it. So, somebody can look at us five years from now and say, oh, my God, what was that council thinking? Who knows? We don't know what's out there. It's also five years, and it's just out of COVID, so we don't, we don't know what's out there. To, to me, I, like I said, none of that changes. It does not negate all the good that they've brought from that past contract. I just, like, I, I just, yeah, leave it at that.
Okay, any other questions? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm still at a loss of why we don't, why, why we're not seeing the, the value. I'm having a hard time understanding. I'm not picking, I'm asking a question.
I, I want you, so, rather than saying, give us the compelling, give me, sell me the, here, you can be the salesman. Tell me the compelling reason why we should not owe our residents a bid, why we should not go out to RFP. We have some time. Tell me on why I should, we shouldn't go out to RFP. We'll do a role play.
Okay.
So, tell me why we should not, why should we not go out to RFP and give them a pass based on what they're proposing?
So, I'll have to ask first, then, the live debate.
No, 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 I'm just kidding, but go ahead.
What is it that you're looking for? Are you looking for service, or are you looking to drive the price down, right? Because I'm gonna be the guy that you're talking to. So, you want me to drive the price down?
I think.
To make it the cheapest price possible, or do you want the best service possible? Or do you want a combination of both?
So, I would imagine that in the contract, there is a baseline of service that they have to adhere to. Anybody that wins this contract. Mr. Wilson, is that, or Director Wilson, is that correct? Is there a baseline service level that we, like, if there, if someone comes in lower than them, or, or two people come in lower than them?
Okay, hold on here. Mr. Wilson, do you wanna answer that?
Sure. I mean, we're getting a little esoteric here, but I mean, at the end of the day, people put trash at the curb once a week, it goes bye-bye. That's, that's the baseline service that we're trying to accomplish, and in a clean, efficient, and as least disruptive manner as possible. So, like, you know, you don't have loud trucks, you're not polluting the air, things of that nature. I mean, that's the, the super basic baseline, end-of-the-day argument. I mean, you put your trash at the curb, and they come and they pick it up.
So, what happens, in the, in the responses, when the bids come in and they're open, what, what happened, what is the, what's the action? From what happens if others are lower? Are you, how do you test what that very simple process is? How do you say that another vendor can't do that? That's, help me understand.
Mr. Wilson?
Sure. So, when we did the last contract, and the mayor underplayed it a little bit, based upon the rates that we were getting charged from Republic to the rates that Flood Brothers provided with the value-added services of the brush collection and some of the other items, it saved the community over two million dollars.
Back then?
Five years ago, correct?
Right. Do you have RFPs in your hand that show you what they can save today?
Well, considering we're still eight dollars underneath, I would say, just based on rates alone, this contract would still save over a million dollars from that contract from five years ago. That's without even getting anything out.
So, you're bas, everybody, some of the, not everybody, some of the basis here is essentially based on a crappy-ass contract that the prior council approved. That's the baseline for all this. Is that what I'm, I'm just trying to understand all this. Because now, now it went from like, I'm kinda neutral to like, holy crap, why are we basing decisions based on a very horrible contract that people approved five years ago? So, I don't, I don't, again, you're actually turning me the other way now, because I truly am a fan. I just, now I'm, now I'm really, everything is, take that off the table. I don't care about five years ago, because none of us, many of us, didn't vote for that crappy contract. So, what today, what today are you basing this decision on, or whoever's trying to sell us on the idea of not going out for RFP? You're, you're giving these great examples of five years ago. What is based on today's decision to not go out to RFP, based on today's guidelines, and based on the vendors that are out there today?
Oh, sure.
Okay, go ahead, Brad.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so, one of the things, and Alderman Woods alluded to it, they were the only ones that responded with a brush collection reimbursement. Based upon some of the consolidation in the marketplace and whatnot, I'm not gonna say that nobody else would come back with that, but I would find it hard to believe that we would get, you know, anything better than what we have currently with, with that proposal. Also, you know, with where inflation is, where these other rates are, the other contracts, Miss Buggy mentioned it, Mr. Woods mentioned it, are about three percent annual increase. This one, if you account for the fact that they're holding the rate at zero for the first year, turns out to be less than two percent per year. All the other renewals?
Year over year.
Year over, correct.
Okay.
So, again, all the other renewals that we've seen in the last couple of years have been, eh, give or take three. So, that's also something that goes into play. Then, you know, the addition of the value add, we've been working with the Clean Air Council, the Wooddell for Greener Tomorrow, looking to increase their budget the next couple of years, because the electronics have been exploiting the collections. Those have been four to five thousand dollars the last couple of years. Woods said they're gonna help take care of that. That means the Green Community Committee can do other things with their funds, as opposed to spending their entire budget to recycle somebody's old TV. You know, the, the pumpkin thing, I'm sure, scarce and the earth flag, I'm sure they're gonna love that. That would be great to, to tell those folks. The roloffs, yeah, that's, a lot of the roloffs come from the street sweeping waste, additional brush, one-off brush collections that the city does outside of the once-a-month, once-every-other-month collection, and spoils from water main breaks. So, that's about eight thousand dollars that's gonna go into there. So, between the less than two percent annual increase, when everybody else is getting about three, and the, if we add up the, the green fair stuff, the brush collection reimbursement, and the, the roloff stuff, you're looking, I don't know, and the extra two street sweepings, which I'd have to cost those out, you're looking at probably, I don't know, anywhere between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars in additional benefits, on top of the fact that they were the lowest bidder last time when we did the RFP.
Which wasn't hard to do, but yes. You're hired. Thank you. That's what I'm looking for to justify in my brain when I get twenty calls of people. So, thank you. That, I'd hire you, if you ever look, thank you.
You and Alderman Woods still in role play here, or?
It's a love relationship.
I'm confused at what you didn't say.
No, I, no, to me, I just, I, again.
Maybe it's because I read so many of these things, I feel like I belong to another company.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Okay, Alderman Sorrentino?
And I do not want a gag order either. Gentlemen, I'm gonna speak for myself, and our word represents twenty-five percent of the city. If it's ten cents or ten million-dollar contract that we enter into with our vendors, personally, I like the principles over the personalities. And we have, I'll speak for all of us, have enjoyed a respectable and a loyal relationship with all of our vendors. And I would say the only time I've had anything other than And I would say the only time I've had anything other than a respectful or loyal relationship, your company's name was brought up. That I don't appreciate, because if we're going to be partners, we have to stick together through thicker, thin, and not jump ship based on whatever bug is biting at your butt. So if we're going to be partners, let's be partners with this council and everybody on this council. This council runs for reelection, remember who your partner is. Fair enough? Thank you.
I think with that, we should take a roll call.
Alderman Ames?
Are we deciding if we want to?
Well, my really?
To approve?
If you want it, yes, if you don't want it, no.
Hey, no, sorry, oh, sorry. This is, so we'll be able to do something next week? This is just committee?
Correct.
Right, so this is if we?
You can always change your mind next week, hopefully not, but, yeah.
I just want to make sure that I'm voting for what we're talking about.
Cool. To extend, yes. This is, if you say yes, then we're extending the contract.
I do, I, again, I.
Okay.
Alderman Curialy?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Thanks to Brad's salesmanship, yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
I'll say yes, because I did see a, an agreement with the mutual respect and loyalty.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Sosmarski?
Yes.
That passes.
Thank you, guys.
Items, yes, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, gentlemen, keep up the good work.
Thank you for being here, and keep up the good work. Next, report and recommendation, oh, I'm sorry, items to be considered at future meetings, additional IT position, winter 2021. And with that, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.